Does it not matter? Because otherwise, we're gonna need a break between because you're not gonna be able to come.
I'm just gonna be outside the door.
Counting down ten, nine, eight, seven.
Welcome to the City Council meeting of March 7, 2024. I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:32 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
I'm here.
Councilmember Davis is absent. Councilmember Lentz?
Here.
Councilmember Mackin?
Here.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Here. We're getting a little bit of echoey feedback from the microphones. Great, thank you. So this meeting has been noticed that Councilmember Lentz will be participating by teleconferencing. And could we get a report out from closed session, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Council met in closed session about the 3M case that's in the agenda. City Attorney's Office wanted direction, and we received it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. With that, can I get, I'd like to amend the agenda and adjourn the meeting in memory of Carolyn Parker, former Planning Commissioner and former San Mateo County mosquito and vector control district representative. Can I get a first and second to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Thank you. And a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye. Thank you. And that moves us to awards and presentations. And we, this month, we have, we are proclaiming March 2024 as Women's History Month. Whereas Women's History Month had its origins as a national celebration in 1981, when Congress passed Pub. L. 97-28, which authorized and requested the President to proclaim the week beginning March 7, 1982, as Women's History Week. In 1987, after being petitioned by the National Women's History Project, Congress passed Pub. L. 100-9, which designated the month of March 1987 as Women's History Month. And whereas the 2024 Women's History Month theme, established by the National Women's History Alliance, is titled, "Women Who Advocate for Equality," excuse me, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, which honors and recognizes women throughout the country who understand the need and are dedicated to the elimination of bias and discrimination from our lives and institutions. And whereas we recognize women, past and present, from every background, who have long realized that an uneven playing field will never bring equity, justice, or fairness in our institutions and social interactions, and who are committed to embracing everyone and excluding no one to achieve freedom and opportunity. Change comes with the help of friends, family, teachers, and community, especially young people who need to learn the value of different voices and points of view as they grow. And whereas we honor local women from the past and present who have displayed courage by advocating for practical goals like equity, diversity, and inclusion, and have taken the lead to show the importance of change to establish safeguards, practice, and legislation to reflect those values. And now therefore be it resolved that the City of Brisbane City Council recognizes the importance of Women's History Month as an opportunity for every woman and girl knows that her possibilities know no bounds. And that is dated today's date, March 7, 2024. And accepting the proclamation via Zoom is Anna Davis, Chair of the Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity and Accountability Committee. Welcome, Anna.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate this and accept the proclamation on behalf of women everywhere. I will have to say too that for Brisbane, being a resident, being a part of the idea committee, as well as being, you know, shown this gratitude and accepting the proclamation on behalf of Women's History Month, there are a lot of firsts here for me, and so I'm honored and blessed to receive the proclamation. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and we'll make sure that we get a photo of this when you're here in the office.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And that will bring us to oral communications. Number one, we welcome speakers providing public comment, but please be advised that this is a limited public forum. It is therefore necessary, it is therefore important for speakers to stay on topic, whether speaking to a particular agenda item or speaking during general public comment. We also require that public comment only address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Speakers have three minutes. And are there any members of the public wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda? And I do have one slip from Margie Power. Margie, would you like to come up to the podium?
Thank you. Good evening. It's Margie Power. I appreciate this opportunity to come speak with you all this evening. I am co-president and co-founder of Leadership Council San Mateo County, which is a county-wide, cross-sector professional development organization for senior-level leaders such as yourselves or your city manager and emerging leaders or rising leaders in the city. And we run two 10-month programs. They're cross-sector, so we bring together business, nonprofit, and public sector people from all over the county one day a month and immerse them in civic knowledge, build on their leadership skills, and most importantly, strengthen relationships across the county so that we can better work together to solve our greatest challenges. So we offer different topics every month. We cover housing, climate change, healthy communities, safe communities. And we're the only county-wide cross-sector leadership development organization. I don't know if Councilmember Cunningham remembers, but she has been a speaker for us in the past on our Economic Development Day. And I'm here tonight to invite you all for a couple of different opportunities. One is to consider sending people from the city or in the community through the program, either program. We also have a very exciting new program that we're launching in April. It's just for elected leaders. And we're starting with a workshop called When Everyone Leads, which is a very powerful framework about leadership being an activity not related to position or authority. And we're creating this program partly to build on leadership skills, but more importantly, to really strengthen relationships across the city councils throughout the county. I myself served on my local school board for nine years, and we have a school board association that got together monthly around different topics and had a chance to just compare notes and learn from each other. And we aim to create something similar for city council people. And it's going to be on April 26 and 27, two half-day workshops followed by three 90-minute Zoom coaching sessions as a cohort. And we'll send you the book, and we think it's pretty exciting. And we would love for you all to consider participating or sending some representatives. We also would love to invite you to become a city partner of ours. We currently have seven city partners, and we're looking to add some more. All it takes is providing meeting space, considering coming to be a speaker or potentially helping us subsidize the program. We only charge $2,900 for each of our programs, and really, the cost is closer to over $5,000. And we're trying to democratize leadership development so that anyone who lives or works in San Mateo County has access to leadership development. So those are my main things. I don't know if I went over the three minutes or not, but I'll follow up with an email to the city manager. Happy to answer any questions after that, and we'd love to welcome Brisbane into our Leadership Council community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. So I have no other slips. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak on an item not on the agenda? It could be you. Would you like to come up to the podium? Okay, no worries.
No further hands raised, Madam Mayor.
There's no one online. Thank you. So that moves us to the consent calendar. Can I get a first and second to approve consent calendar items C through G?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. And can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis is absent. Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye. Thank you. And this is, we move on to old business, which is to consider approval of a letter to households on Tulare Street and Thomas Avenue asking for their participation in a trial residential parking permit program. I understand that Councilmember Cunningham is going to recuse herself because she lives in the program or proposed program area.
Give me a second.
So we can move forward now. Do we have a staff report on this?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'll begin by providing just a quick background on the current status of the residential parking permit program. On February 1, the staff presented two possible options for a program to the council. One option was Central Brisbane and the other option being Trial Streets. After discussion, it was determined that the best way to proceed would be to gauge interest, gauge public interest on Trial Streets, and these streets were determined to be Thomas Avenue and Tulare Street. So attached here with this staff report is a draft letter to the residents on this street to gauge their interest and see and get any feedback from them. Additionally, council also directed staff to make modifications to the Brisbane Municipal Code, and this will be brought to council in a few weeks.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Councilmember Lentz?
Thanks, Terry. So in the staff report, it talks about having money for signs. How many signs are we talking about that would be installed?
It'd be 17 signs on Tulare, and it'd be seven signs on Thomas Avenue.
Seventeen signs? That seems, that seems pretty excessive.
So the spacing would be spaced 200 feet apart and staggered on both sides of the street. So on the opposite side of the street, there would be space in between the space between the signs on the other street.
Okay, so the signs, I'm curious, I'm sorry, Karen.
Apologies. They need to be visible from any place that someone would park, as they are in bigger cities.
No, I, yeah, no, I, I think, you know, we, you know, because we're a small town and, you know, we have signs here and there, but not a lot, not like San Francisco where there are so many. But I guess when you implement a program like this, that's why you have so many signs in San Francisco for their parking. So, okay, and, you know, in San Francisco, they have sidewalks. We don't have sidewalks on these streets. At least, I don't think we do, or maybe, well, I guess there's some on Tulare on one side and not on the other. So could the signs, you know, potentially take away parking? Because they have to be in a place where people can see them when they're trying to find a place to park?
I would say I don't think we put a microscope on it and looked that closely, but we, we'd be able to set them, you know. Unfortunately, the city right-of-way is wider than the road, so some of people's frontage is technically right-of-way where we could put the signs. We'd try to place them not to take away any parking.
Yes. Okay, I know that could be a little tricky because sometimes you don't know if it's someone's property. I mean, they've been using the property next to their home for as long as they've been living there. And the people that owned the house prior, they've been parking there the whole time, and it just feels like it's a personal parking space rather than a public parking space. So, I mean, I guess maybe the signs, you know, probably would help kind of, you know, provide a clearer understanding of what's private and what's public. Okay, those are the only questions I have. Thank you.
Colleen, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. On the proposed letter to the residents of Tulare and Thomas, under number three, it says the number of guest permits per dwelling will be 10, and that seems like a lot. So I'd like to hear a little bit of background on how you arrived at 10, and then it begs the question, if I have 10 permits, can I give them to my neighbors who have extra cars to use all year long? How, how will guest permits be distinguished? Do they have an expiration date? Do they have a limited shelf life? How would that be monitored?
So that maybe needs to be clarified for this letter, and I'm glad that we're having the discussion. That's 10 unique days of guest permits.
Oh, so it's days?
Yes.
Okay, and so that permit, though, would have an expiration date?
Yeah, it would only be good for the one overnight period, and it would still work the way that we proposed in the past time that we brought this to council, that someone would have to go online, do an application, print out a PDF, and put it on their dash.
Okay, thank you for that. And then on number four, it says the parking will be restricted to permit holders starting at 10:00 PM, ending at 6:00 AM the next day, Sunday through Thursday. What happened to Friday and Saturday?
We talked about not restricting parking then, and it facilitates people having guests, having parties or dinners. The problem being relatively more, I mean, I guess there's a couple of different problems. When you have airport parking, if you left a couple of days out, you're still going to capture that. And it's trying to accommodate people that are having more, you know, activity at their homes on the weekends.
Okay. And I will just say, living on a street with a lot of airport parking, it occurs midweek more often than the weekends. Usually, they return on weekends, so. Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thank you very much.
So I don't really have any questions for staff, but I think we should get into the discussion or changes of any language we may want to see in the letter that goes out. And for me, I would like number three clarified to 10 single-day permits per resident, per residence. Not that each person who has a permit can get 10 single-day extra permits. So it would be per residence, residence address. Is that what the intention would be?
That's correct.
Okay, so if I have four people with permits in my household, they wouldn't all get 10 days of friends parking?
Correct. It would just be 10 for that household.
Okay. And we let them argue it out on who gets to have guests, okay?
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, is this discussion already, or would you like to go into public comment?
Oh. Do we have a member of the public that would like to comment? We do have someone in the audience. Sure. No, you have to come up. Otherwise, the microphone won't pick you up.
I had, I had a question. I didn't hear or I didn't understand that you're sending out a letter to judge what the reaction will be, but you have a law that's going to go into effect. Did I hear that right?
I will need to clarify with what Karen Kinser stated, but I believe that I believe we, we can't have back-and-forth discussion from, from your comments.
Well, that's, that's a question I have.
Okay. And we will get that sorted out. I believe the letter, what we're deciding tonight is whether we're going to send a letter, whether we have enough community involvement to want to proceed with this. We wouldn't be changing a law until we knew that the community wanted to do that.
Okay, that clarifies it. Thank you.
Okay.
It just sounded strange, like, here's a letter, and in two weeks, we're gonna do it, you know, whether you like it or not. Thank you.
No worries. And to clarify this, because not everybody was here for the initial discussion, the council had made the, the decision to first test the waters on a couple of test streets by sending out a letter to those residents to see if they were in favor. And if we don't get a percentage that are in favor of having a permit parking program, we will not proceed with it. Okay, so do we have any other members online that would like to speak?
Madam Mayor, I would like to note for the record that we did receive written correspondence from Steve Karikas regarding the parking permit issue, and also another from Andrew Kamm.
Okay. Okay, and with that, we can close the public hearing?
I see no hands raised, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and we can move into discussion. So we would want to change wording of, of number three to make it very clear what the extra permits, what they would be issued for in single days. And I think the rest of it is fairly straightforward.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I, I do, I have one more question. I forgot, if I could. Under number five, it says enforcement will only be conducted during program hours. Is that really true? And, and I'm asking because I know we had lots of discussions, and, and I don't know how this settled on that. But I believe Commander Garcia had indicated the responses would be made when available personnel could accommodate it. And is that always going to just be during program hours, which would be 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM? Because it seems like if they couldn't make it at 6:00 AM, would you still be responding at 7:00 AM?
Based on the hours, we would only be responding between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. So it would, if they were, if we, if we got the complaint and we wouldn't be able to get it till 8:00 AM, then we couldn't, we would make note of it and come back at 10:00, see if it's still there, then we would take action at that point.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite, I couldn't quite hear that.
Yeah, they wouldn't be in violation outside of those hours. So we would definitely still go by to see if the vehicle's there. We would make note of it. And then we would tell, obviously, our night shift people at 10:00 PM to go back out there. And if it was still in violation, then we would take action.
So literally, the enforcement is only between those hours of 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So Terry, you, the, the amount of signs seems, well, it's a lot more than I thought there was going to be, but it makes sense, you know, given, you know, that you have to provide some notice to people who are driving various sections of the street, what to, you know, what they can do in regards to parking. But, you know, that, that, that might seem, you know, kind of, I don't know, it might, you know, to some, like, it's changing the character of their street. And so I think, I think it's only fair that they, they should know the amount of signs that would be installed on their street as part of the question. So I, I would like us to have a question or an item six just indicating, you know, how many signs will be on their street and what the sign would say, just so that they're aware of that when. just so that they're aware of that when they make their decision.
I, I agree that signs tend to be intrusive, Cliff, and it seems that it just invokes sort of, it would make you upset that, about the signs being there and, and sort of reinforce your feelings about the program, whether you like it or not. And I, I don't foresee any problems with putting that, you know, doing, that it would require the 17 and seven signs as, as one of the listings of what's going on in the program. Or do you think it would be more conducive to put it more in the body of it? That, that the program would consist of having to put signage up? And that, what, what does staff think of that?
Are you asking me or staff, Terry?
No, I'm asking what staff would think it'd be better to put it in, in, whether it'd be better to put it in the body or as a, one of the conditions?
Yeah, I don't, it, it could go either place. I don't think it's technically a parameter of the program. I mean, these are, I think if we're gonna say anything about signs, we'd want to say 12 by 18, typical no parkings or parking restriction signs that will need, that will be spaced at 200 feet. We, you know, if you really wanted, we could have a sample, but that seems more than necessary.
Yeah, I agree with you, Karen. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You know, I was, oh, yeah, so, I mean, you know, what I'm, what I'm getting at is that, yeah, I mean, I don't think there needs to be like a big description of the signs. You know, I think people know what a typical street sign looks like, because most people have, you know, parked in San Francisco. I think it's just, it's only fair to the residents of these streets that they know how many signs would be installed on their street. And it's just, just a little bit more information for the residents to make an informed decision. So that, that's all that I'm getting at. And it should be part of, you know, the things that they're, you know, that, so that it's part of the, the listing of, of things that allow them to understand what the program is about and what, and what it entails. And, and then, yeah, if they want to do it, then that's great, and if they don't, then at least they have all the information.
Actually, yeah, I think under parameters makes more sense, or we both do. As number six?
Either that or after the date, we would put a separate paragraph to implement the program signage and the amount of 17, seven would be required to be installed prior to implementation. Maybe that.
Below the vote, are you in favor of a test program, and then your address and the due date?
I was thinking after the second paragraph, in an effort to reduce parking challenges, to put, to implement the program, signage in this amount would be needed.
Okay, that's fine, too, yeah.
I don't, yeah.
I think a city, when they have to implement whatever program, whether it's speed or parking, the, the city determines the signage they need to implement a program. If, in fact, several of my colleagues think it's important to say how many signs, I think it's relevant also to say how far apart the signs are. Because if you tell me, I'm gonna put 17 signs in a couple of blocks, I go, oh, my God, that's too many signs. But if you tell me the distance between the signs and, and why there are 17 signs, I think it's remiss to say 17 signs without an explanation, then. Either don't say 17, or at least explain why.
You know, Col, I agree with you, Colleen. I think we should have the explanation. I know that for folks where I live, they're not real keen about having a, a parking permit, you know, program, one of which are the signs. And so, you know, having, having it in, in a paragraph, or having it be one of the parameters, I think we need to be very clear about it, because putting in those signs, it will have an impact on the character of that street. But, you know, then again, having the permit program, you know, could potentially alleviate parking issues, and, and then that would be, you know, a plus. So it's, it's really knowing all of the pros and cons, so that they can make good decisions.
And, and did we have a state, some sort of code? Did I miss that as to how frequent those signs have to be?
There's no established guideline on the spacing.
Okay.
It, it can vary by city, but we, we found that 200-feet spacing is pretty common.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm happy either way, if the council wants to have it, that they'd be spaced 200 feet apart for visibility. And, or we put the number of signs, it's, it's certainly either way for me.
If I may, part of the reason this is, is a pilot program is that both the acceptance can be difficult, but also to kind of debug the program. And doing this on two streets will tell us what the appetite is for the signage, I'm sure, and we can learn from that. Because I, I believe going forward, if this works on these two streets and, and the residents accept it, it may go to other streets will want this, and we'll know more after going through these two.
So are you saying we should have less verbiage because it's a test program? Or do you think we should have the verbiage?
No, I'm just saying, if, if right now, if we say 17 and 200 feet maybe is excessive, we'll find out. And then maybe going forward, we could either increase it, reduce it. We'll learn a lot from this.
Okay, but we are gonna put the, the wordage into the letter so that the, the residents of these two streets know how many signs would be installed.
Yes, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Something like
Then I, I, I'm in favor of then moving forward with, with the letter, with the, the changes, you know, the clarification of number three, and wordage from staff regarding the amount of signs and the distance between the two signs.
I was gonna suggest the program will require 17 signs on Tulare and seven on Thomas spaced to provide visibility from any location on the street.
That works for me. That's my motion.
So you're making a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lent?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
And then we have a recusal from Councilmember Cunningham and an absence from Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. Would you invite Councilmember Cunningham back in?
Thank you, everyone.
Welcome back. And that brings us to new business, item I, to consider authorization of a $10,000 grant to Rebuilding Together Peninsula for Rehabilitation of Home in Brisbane Owned by Low-Income Household. Councilmember Cunningham has returned as panelist, and staff report, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. On February 15th, Robert Skelton of Rebuilding Together Peninsula, or RTP, made a presentation to council. As a reminder, RTP is a local nonprofit that renovates and repairs the homes of low-income homeowners throughout the peninsula. RTP's work is funded from grants from a variety of sources, including local jurisdictions. Mr. Skelton noted at his February 15th presentation that RTP had recently approved an application for home repairs for a Brisbane home. At that meeting, council directed staff to schedule an item for a future council agenda to consider sponsoring that Brisbane homeowner's application. Hence the request before you tonight. So sponsor, sponsorship funds are requested in the amount of $10,000. RTP has confirmed this would allow more and deeper repairs to be made to the home in question. The application that was submitted had quite a long list of, of needs, and a $10,000 grant would allow for many more of them to be met than otherwise would be provided without a sponsorship. RTP, procedurally, RTP would invoice the city after the project was completed, providing evidence of the scope of work as well as that the work was completed. Here, I need to correct the written staff report. Should council grant the requested funds for a specific household in Brisbane, the city would not be considered a National Rebuilding Day sponsor. That sponsorship is for funds that would be dedicated without a specific purpose in mind.
I'm sorry, you'll need to speak.
Oh, sorry. The staff report stated that should we grant this $10,000 request to sponsor the specific Brisbane home, we'd be recognized as a National Rebuilding Day sponsor. National Rebuilding Day is, is RTP's day when a lot of projects are done, the bulk of their work is done. So the staff report was incorrect. If we grant a $10,000 request but direct that it be used for a Brisbane household, we would be sponsoring that project, not National Rebuilding Day. So I just wanted to correct that in the staff report. And the work also may or may not be completed on National Rebuilding Day, but it would be completed within the calendar year. Also regarding fiscal impact, the written staff report indicated general funds would be needed to fund this $10,000 sponsorship. Upon further legal review, legal counsel advised it is possible that the Low and Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund managed by the housing authority could be utilized for those funds. We're still consulting with Rebuilding Together to fully understand the eligibility of the particular application. So tonight, we are requesting direction from council to authorize the use of $10,000 from the general fund should our consultation with RTP and legal counsel's ultimate determination be that we can't use the Low and Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund. So with that, I'll end my report. I'm happy to answer questions. We also have legal counsel available.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
I have Sorry, Cliff.
No.
Did you say you did not?
He said he did not.
Thank you. I, I may have forgotten, how was this person identified in the first place? And, and I'm really asking this question for the benefit of our residents who might be listening to this. It's like, how did this person end up being the person that we're looking at? And if there were more information that we could put forth even tonight about how this program works, in case there's other people out there who say, hey, I, I should be on this list, too. Thank you.
Absolutely. So as Mr. Skelton had noted in his presentation, RTP accepts applications from any low-income household in the peninsula, in San Mateo County. I think they also do a little bit in Santa Clara. In order to qualify, the household has to qualify as low-income under the San Mateo County household income limits. So they do some due diligence there to verify income. And the application itself, I'm not super familiar with its content, but I believe in addition to providing the income level and supporting documentation, there's a full, you know, scope of work that's described, and RTP would follow up with additional consultation to confirm what the scope of work is, is, are there other items that need to be addressed? The way I understand it, this, RTP has not had, in recent memory, an application from Brisbane. This is the first application they've had in, in some time. And I think I recall correctly, so at the February 15th presentation, Mr. Skelton was really excited, to paraphrase him, to have a Brisbane application, and they do hope to do more projects in Brisbane. If, if anyone else has anything else to add, that's my understanding.
Thank you.
Colleen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So once again, can we get a definitive ruling on this? That it does not qualify for our, I can't remember what you call it.
Affordable Housing.
Affordable Housing Fund, thank you. Are, are we certain?
I'll defer to legal counsel on that.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember, the question there is, there's the, the law limits the use of those funds for certain purposes. It does permit up to $250,000 per fiscal year for homeless prevention, or individuals or families who would be homeless but for this assistance, including appropriate activities for homelessness prevention. So we would have to make an evaluation as to whether or not the proposed use of these funds out of the Low and Moderate Income Asset Housing Fund would meet that definition. If it did not, then we couldn't use that fund. And so that's why the request before you tonight is, if that fund could not be used, does the council authorize the use of the gen, of general fund money for this project?
Thank you.
So, any other questions for staff? So when we had the presentation, the Rebuilding Together said that they had one person from Brisbane who had applied. And the next thing we know, we are being asked to sponsor that one project. And it seems a little bit like, to me, bait and switch. We were asked if we could discuss supporting Rebuilding Together and to bring it forward at a future council member, council meeting. But not that we were, wanted to sponsor a specific project. I don't think that was what was discussed at our, after the presentation, when it was requested that it comes back as a further discussion and whether our Low Income Housing Fund could be used for this kind of purposes. So I was a little taken back when we have this on the calendar to support one particular home. And I, I guess I'm not sure was that staff's initial take from this?
Well, I'm, you only have one member of the subcommittee here tonight, but so perhaps Councilmember Lentz wants to speak to this, because that, that was a discussion at the subcommittee level.
Mm-hmm, sure. So, yeah, so when Madison and I spoke with Mr. Skelton, he had informed us that there was a project, a potential project in Brisbane. Someone had submitted an application, and he was, he was hopeful that they would qualify. There needs to be, you know, certain criteria met. And in the end, that person did meet the criteria. And the, the criteria, you know, really kind of reflected our goals or, and our aspirations for our affordable housing, you know, you know, plan, right, to, to help reduce you know, the, you know, to help reduce the impacts of people becoming homeless or leaving Brisbane because they can't afford to stay in our town. So this project is funded through various grants that Rebuilding Together has acquired. So this project wouldn't move forward without our help. However, this is a project that's in Brisbane. And it is in line with what our goals are for our Affordable Housing Strategic Plan. So these additional funds would go towards, as Julia had said, doing a deeper rehabilitation of the home to make it safer. So that, you know, that this person, this family can continue to live in their house. It's these types of projects that keep people from becoming homeless. If you cannot safely live in your home, then it makes it difficult to stay there. And, you know, a lot of people might, oh, you know, you have your home, just sell it, then you have money. But, you know, a lot of people, they take out seconds and thirds on their homes. You don't really know a person's financial situation. And so it is better to do what we can for our own. And if we have these funds that we've allocated for affordable housing needs, then we should apply those funds there. And I hope that the determination from our legal staff and the staff from Rebuilding Together determines that, yes, the money that would go for this particular project or any project that falls within these parameters would qualify for assistance because it would keep people from potentially becoming homeless.
Thank you. Any other questions or should we open up to public? Let's open it up for public comment. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this issue?
I see one hand raised, Madam Mayor. Diana, go ahead and unmute.
Hello. Thank you, council for taking this up. I'm a little concerned. I watched the budget meetings and we delayed several proposed expenditures because we had some big problems with finances. We had to take money out of the general fund just to make ends meet. So I'm a little concerned about saying, oh, we should, you know, if these funds, these earmarked funds don't qualify, then we should take money out of the general fund. And we were promised at the budgetary meeting that we would have a mid-year budget check-in. We're halfway, more than halfway past the mid-year budget check-in. Haven't heard anything about when that's going to happen. And we're rolling up on fiscal year-end. And so it's like, to me, it doesn't make sense to make, take money out of the pot when we haven't gotten an update on the fiscal health of the community. And the other thing is, I think it's really nice to think about helping people stay in their homes in Brisbane. But we've had several families who've had some really devastating things happen and nobody stepped up to help them stay in their home. So I just, I want to just be, encourage you to be very cautious about kind of cherry picking things to do. That's it. Thank you very much.
Do we have any other members of the public who would like to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and we'll open it up for discussion.
Sure. I would like further investigation and further study of this item. I don't want to say no to it because I think it's an item that is very, very important. But just hearing that we have one person who was identified and we don't know how they were identified. Are they a friend of someone? I don't know how they were identified. I don't know who they are. But just sitting here listening to this presentation from staff, comments from staff, comments from half of the subcommittee, I'm not feeling like I have a full picture of what we could do if we open this Pandora's box here. I'm sitting here thinking right now of at least 10 families that I personally know of. Not people who have applied for anything, not people who have a clue that they could apply for anything. And many of them are seniors in our community who have homes that are, in my estimation, not being a builder, completely rundown, bordering on not livable, that we could assist. So what I would like to see happen is that we, if this is the road we're on, and I like it, I do like it very much, is that we do further investigation into, how would this really work from an equity perspective throughout our city before we, what looks like cherry pick one family to make us politically look good and to make RTP's services politically look good? I'm all for it, but I think it's premature for us to make a decision to help one family when I know there's probably half a dozen people sitting at home going, I can't afford to stop water coming through my kitchen every time we have a downpour because it's coming through old foundations and it's coming from the mountain. It's not coming from my personal. I mean, I know so many older people in town who have problems that maybe this particular service could address. I love it, but I think it's premature and I think it's kind of, it looks like a bright and shiny thing that we're trying to put out politically to make us look good rather than making wise financial decisions. That's my two cents.
Thank you. Colleen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was a little taken back by this because I was just surprised suddenly we're being asked to donate $10,000. I went back to, that was a council meeting on the 15th of February. I went back and listened to that portion, Mr. Skelton's presentation, very nicely done. And he mentioned there was an applicant from Brisbane. She lives on a hill and needs a staircase. And suddenly, we're spending $10,000 to redo deep repairs on the home that need very skilled labor. That's afar kai from a staircase. My second thought was, so even if $10,000 came from Affordable Housing Fund, why would this all go to one person? I had the same thought you did, Councilmember Cunningham. In that, if this was the only person from Brisbane that even applied, perhaps people in Brisbane just don't know much about the program. We recently publicized it, but before then, there could be lots of people might have applied but didn't know. And in terms of helping people, I think Brisbane, we always have a big heart. We try to do the best, but we've had two years of borrowing from reserves. I think before we start giving away money from our general fund, we need that mid-year budget review. We don't have excess funds to start handing out. I understand that this is something would need to be verified on affordable housing, but I think we additionally need guidelines. Do we take affordable housing? Does it go to one person who has a big project? Or do we try to be more equitable and give many people who would be thrilled to have $1,000 and not $10,000? And try to help more people stay in their homes rather than rebuilding one person and making them whole in their homes? So I would prefer that this be continued to a later date where we have time to investigate more about the situation with this one person. Also, whether the Affordable Housing Funds could be used. And also find out about our own finances. Because at this point in time, we've got a lot of asks from our public about, last night we had an insurance seminar. Everybody was asking, well, why doesn't the city take care of more brush and trees? And so we've got a lot of asks on different things. We're going to need to be very prudent and careful about how we spend money in the general fund. So I would like to see this continued to another date so we can get deeper into this.
Thank you. Cliff?
Yeah. I understand her, you know, concerns and, you know, very valid. You know, it is unfortunate that we haven't had people from Brisbane apply for this assistance through Rebuilding Together Peninsula. You know, maybe about 10 years ago, we did have a couple of applicants. And the work that was done on their homes was significant and it really helped those families. You know, as Mr. Skelton had said in his presentation, you know, Rebuilding Together has been around a long time and they're a nationwide organization. You know, this particular property, it's not, no one's cherry picking anything. This is just someone who heard about the program, applied, and was accepted from Brisbane. You know, promoting this particular project, I think, allows us the opportunity to have more people in Brisbane understand the program and move forward with applying. You know, a lot of people, you know, have issues with their homes, but they also have a lot of pride too. And there's also a lot of skepticism about getting free, you know, assistance. No one thinks that you can get that. But that does occur with Rebuilding Together. And, you know, with the system that Rebuilding Together has, they take $10,000 and they turn it into $20,000 and $30,000 through volunteers and getting contractors to do work for free or at a very discounted rate. So, you know, partnering with Rebuilding Together makes sense. You know, using money from the general fund, you're right, we're going to get a mid-year review. I feel very confident that when we see that, you know, see that review, will show that we have not been spending out of reserves, that our finances are strong. But we need to have that evaluation, you know, in a public hearing. If we can get legal and Rebuilding Together to agree that the money could come from the Affordable Housing Fund, I would hope that we would do it sooner rather than later just because the National Rebuilding Day is towards the end of April. And here we are at the beginning of March. So we're not leaving a lot of time for those funds to be applied for that particular event. That doesn't mean that we can't, you know, use money for another project or even maybe for this particular property later on down the line. But I think it, I think it sets a good, a good example from us as a council that we are looking at a variety of ways to use our Affordable Housing Funds so that people in our community can use that money. We've been basically sitting on this money for a long time. We keep accruing funds, but we're not really getting that money out into the community. And this is, I think, a really good way to do it if, you know, if it's allowed legally. So I would hope that if staff, if our legal counsel can approve the funds coming from the Affordable Housing Fund, that we do provide the $10,000 grant, you know, money to RTP.
Thank you. So my thoughts on this are that Cliff sort of made it sound that if we didn't put this $10,000 in at this moment, that this project would still go forward through Peninsula Rebuilding, Rebuilding Together. And that may or may not be the case because we don't have any authorization over those funds or those projects. I have concerns about our fiscal picture. And I don't think that now is the time to be giving out additional funds until we know what the picture is. And hopefully, we will get that mid-year review sooner than later so that we can discuss it and see where we're at. I do think that if we were to donate to, whether it's Rebuilding Together or another entity, and have a partnership-type agreement, that we shouldn't be earmarking it for a specific need. If we want something to go for Brisbane people, we need to let all Brisbane people know that there's a fund or there's, just like we made the housing rental assistance program available to everyone in the community or tried to spread the word about it. Not everyone applied for it that probably could have. Just like there's probably a lot of people in town that could apply for Rebuilding Together funds and haven't, for whatever reason, and maybe because they don't know about it. But I'm certainly not for spending any money out of our general fund till we know where we're at and how much of our reserves we're going to be using this year. And moving forward, what our fiscal policy looks like. So I would be in favor of holding off until we knew if this money could be used for, from the Low Income Housing Fund and revisiting it at that time and deciding on what kind of parameters and what kind of gifting we may be able to do from that fund.
Madam Mayor, I can just, a couple of things. So the use of the Low and Mod Housing Funds would have to be on a project-specific basis. So if you want us to continue to work with Rebuilding Together with regards to this specific project and to see whether or not those funds would qualify, we can do that and then report back to the city council before any final decision is made. And then just in terms of the mid-year, and in part for the speaker earlier, we are planning on having that, I believe, at the first meeting of April. And the reason that it comes at that particular point in time is because the revenue data lags. So we don't have mid-year information until near the end of Q3, which is going to be the end of this month. So that's the reason for that timing.
Thank you. I knew it was coming up soon. And I do think looking at the legal, the financial legal ability to use funds would be a good thing to do so we know moving forward. But, so I would rather table this until after that, after we can find that out. And probably would need to be after our budget meeting anyway.
Could potentially bring that back to you on the first meeting of April. If we are able to tie down whether or not we could use those funds. And then hopefully also have the mid-year review.
If we have time on that agenda?
Yeah.
If we're doing a deep dive into mid-year review, we may.
And you, or you could move it to the second meeting of April.
Not have time for that. So do we need to have a motion to continue the, to continue this item? And did you want to say something else?
I had one more comment, if I could, please, Madam Mayor. I don't think we've been just trying to sit on Affordable Housing Funds and doing nothing. It's a difficult situation in finding, sometimes if we wanted to do a large project, having enough funds. It seems like we don't have enough funds or... in order to do larger projects. But my other thought in this is, in terms of identifying people in Brisbane that are needing this sort of a program, it seems like Brisbane Village Helping Hands would be a great vehicle to partner up. They're, they're helping people, they're seeing their homes, they're going to be more likely to identify people that might not understand this exists, and connect them to the program. So I'd also like to see that happen. And it seems like the, correct me if I'm wrong, the issue here is that in order for the Affordable Housing Funds to apply, it has to be whether this constitutes 25% of the after rehabilitation value of the dwelling. And I'd like our legal counsel, if you could please, to comment on that. Is that the case here?
Sure, Madam Mayor, and Councilmember Mackin. They're really two different items. On one hand, the Fund, the Low, Lower and Modern Income Housing Fund can be used if there is what's called substantial rehabilitation of the, of the home. But the substantial rehabilitation means that after that rehabilitation takes place, the value has to be at least 25% of the value of the land and the property. But a different, a different avenue, which is one that we have discussed tonight, is that the funds can be used if the purpose of that is to, is for homeless prevention. In other words, the project has to be for an individual or families who would be homeless, but for the assistance. And we have to look at what, what is being, what the project is, to determine whether or not that would qualify as homelessness prevention. So it doesn't have to qualify as substantial rehabilitation, that's one avenue. The other avenue is homelessness prevention. And that's why we would have to evaluate this particular project to see if it qualifies for that purpose. And I think as Mr. Holstein sort of raised the issue, we wanted to get clarification from council, whether, whether we should hold off on making that determination, and then bringing the item as a, as a whole back to you in April, rather than make a decision ahead of time. I just wanted to get clarification on that, on that direction.
So that being said, it's not necessarily tied to the dollar figure of $10,000, because homeless prevention, it could be $5,000 or $7,000, is that correct?
That's correct. We would, what we, what we would do is we would look at the whole project to determine whether or not the activities are necessary to prevent a family from becoming homeless. And if it does, then the dollar amount, whether it's $5,000 or $10,000, or, you know, some other larger number, then it would be appropriate use of that lower income housing.
Okay. Well, this, again, I would like more information, and, and I would still like a little, a little broader look at, at whether we help more people, or if we're just going to concentrate on one. I think there's probably more need here in the city of Brisbane than we even recognize. So that's my thoughts on it. And I would make a motion to continue this to a later date, after staff has had time to review, and you can come back to the council with more information.
I do want to say that since this person applied through a second party, or a third party, I guess you'd say, it's very possible we wouldn't have the financial data to make a determination if this would be something that would prevent homelessness. Because I'm assuming we wouldn't be getting involved in that portion of it, but I don't know what information Rebuilding Together is willing to provide. But again, we have a motion on the table to continue this to another meeting. And do I have a second?
I would second that. And I have nothing else to say. Thank you.
Okay. And then roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Lenz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis is absent.
Okay, that moves us to staff reports. Item J, City Manager's Report on Upcoming Activities. Interim City Manager, Holstein, can you report, please?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since we have plenty of time tonight, I've got quite a long story to tell you. I won't do that to you. Just a couple of items. One of them, we reported to you earlier this week, and we also put information out on the Blast and our other social media, that there will be tree maintenance work done out at the Marina, probably starting next week. It'll be between Docks One and Dock Six and beyond regarding poplar trees. There will be some trimming of some of the trees, and there will be a few trees that will be taken out that are no longer alive. And then we will reevaluate in spring and see how the rest of the trees are doing, and then we'll go from there. Related to that, and also related to our Town Hall meeting last evening with regards to fire insurance, we are in contract with a company called Plan It Geo, an urban forestry consulting firm and software development firm, that will be performing an inventory of our public trees in town. This program is budgeted in our Public Works Department, and will be reviewed by the Open Space and Ecology Committee. And the purpose is to get an accurate inventory of the health of the trees in the city's right-of-way. Planet Geo, our risk, will be seen throughout town for the first round of assessments, beginning March 26th to April 4th. And we will be getting more information about this out on our Blast and other media outlets. That's all for tonight.
Thank you. Brings us to Mayor and Council Matters. Countywide Assignments and Subcommittee Reports, and Item I, which is to consider recruitment for vacancy on city committees and on the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Directors. Do we have staff comments on that, or is our clerk going to give us a little direction?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to provide a background that with the recent passing of Carolyn Parker, council should consider opening a recruitment for a new representative for the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board, Board of Directors. And this is going to be a four-year term seat. With the resignation letter of OSAC Committee Member Shana Combs in February, the council should also consider opening a recruitment for a new OSAC committee member. This is a two-year term seat to fill a vacancy for the remaining portion of the former OSAC committee member Shana Combs' term, which was to end by January of 2026. Thirdly, the IDEA Committee can have between five to seven members, and members must reside or work in Brisbane. Four IDEA Committee Members' terms expired in 2024, and IDEA Committee Members Horton and Kohet Kar would like to be considered for reappointment. IDEA Committee Member Osseto resigned in January, and IDEA Committee Member Budeli declined to be considered for reappointment. The council should consider reappointing Committee Members Horton and Kohet Kar. And according to the committee bylaws, the city council may reappoint the member to the committee without re-interviewing the member after their initial term. Also, the city council should consider opening a recruitment for up to three new IDEA Committee Members. And according to the IDEA Committee bylaws, after the initial appointment, committee members shall serve two-year terms. So with this, if council decides to recruit immediately, the recruitment timeline can be from March 8th through April 30th. The recruitment period can begin May 2nd. The city can, at the city council meeting, the staff can provide an update and schedule interviews. And May 2024, interview the applicants. And June 2024, appoint and swear in the new representative and the committee members. And with that, we would like to receive direction from council.
Anybody want to comment? I, I think we should go ahead with the recruitments and get the word out, and the city clerk's timeline sounds reasonable?
Sounds good to me.
I agree.
Okay.
And would council members be agreeable to, at the next council meeting, provide a resolution to reappoint the committee members Kohet Kar and Horton for their reappointment in the IDEA Committee?
Sure.
Yes.
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 Okay, council members, who would like to report out on any Subcommittee meetings?
I have none.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. February 22nd, had a Peninsula Clean Energy meeting. Lots and lots of positive feedback been received, because the Board of Directors made a decision to freeze rates for the customers. And that is until June of this year. And by way of explanation, Peninsula Clean Energy is not for profit, community-owned. So we're striving to keep the rates down. The freeze is on staying on the 2023 rates, and it'll give Peninsula Clean Energy time to evaluate what we charge, because profits are not the goal. PG&E enacted a significant increase of 15% as of January 1st, 2024. So holding the line on Peninsula Clean Energy rates is a significant move. Also, we've had an updated report on home electrification in 2023. 5% of gas water heaters were replaced with electrified versions. That's still smaller than we'd like, so we're going to try to increase publicity on how to go about doing that. Space heating conversion to electric heat is seeing much faster adoption, with 15% of gas furnaces being replaced with heat pump water heaters, I'm sorry, heat pump HVAC heaters. And finally, just a reminder to customers, is taking advantage of Peninsula Clean Energy's on-bill pay allows you to finance part of the cost of electric conversion. It's a zero-interest loan over five years that you pay off on your bill. You can't beat that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cliff, did you have any?
Please unmute. You're muted.
Yes. Yeah, Madison and I had the Charter City and Elections Issues Subcommittee Meeting. You know, since Madison is not here, I don't think it's really appropriate for me to, like, to go into, like, what we just, you know, like, the details of how we, you know, discuss the situation. But we did have a good conversation. We asked a lot of questions, and I thought we gave good direction for staff to then bring back this item before the full council. That's it.
Okay. Wow, I'm surprised. I went through some discussions about some of these topics a few years ago, and we had four or five meetings, and still hadn't broached all the issues. So.
Well, you know, we, we felt that, well, we both decided that not to, like, give recommendations, that it would be better for the council as a whole to discuss it with, you know, no opinions from, from the Subcommittee. I mean, it's really, you know, it's really about just gathering information, so that then we can bring that information to the council, as well as the, the full community, and, and have a good discussion amongst ourselves, so that we can then provide the best direction moving forward.
Okay, great. Thank you. I had an Airport Land Use Committee meeting. Nothing too exciting. And I think that was the only Subcommittee's I had. So that will bring us to written communications. Do we have any written communications that you didn't already address?
We have correspondence from Shana Combs, Calvin Lee, Karen Ferguson, Arthur Sun, Steve Karikas, regarding dark sky lighting. And we also, like, we mentioned Andrew Com and Stephen Karikas.
Okay, thank you. And that brings us to oral communications, number two. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak?
We have a hand raised, Madam Mayor, from Diana.
Great, thank you. Please go ahead. Diana?
Yeah, sorry, I'm a little technology challenged here.
No worries.
So one quick comment on the parking permit pilot. I just wonder, instead of doing 17 signs on Tulare and however many on Thomas, is there some way, and maybe it's not even feasible or legal, to just put some big signs at the entrances of town to say, we have a parking permit system, and it'll be enforced? Instead of, because, I mean, $5,000 for 17 plus however many signs seems like a lot. So if we're going to do this throughout Brisbane, it's a pretty significant capital infusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So we'll move to Insurance, and I'd like to close in memory of Carolyn Parker. And it is 8:54.